Alderman Kurkowski.
Here.
Alderman Lorick is excused. Alderman Dukniak.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gale.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here.
Everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Barb, would you start us off?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just before we start, I just want to make an announcement. Alderman Lorick is not with us today. He is part of the Coast Guard, and he has been called up for active duty, so he will not be with us until October the 5th. So again, we hope him to come home speedy, safe, in the way he went. So again, nice to see if a member of the council is serving. So please take a look at the minutes in item 3. There's no errors, omissions, questions, motion.
Kurkowski will make a motion to approve the minutes of July 16, 2019.
Dukniak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
And item 3 is Mayoral proclamation, and when you are ready, Catherine, would you please read that?
Certainly. Mayoral proclamation declaring August as Children's Vision and Learning Month. Whereas children across the state of Wisconsin prepare for the start of another school year, many of them will begin their studies with undiagnosed and untreated vision problems. And whereas research shows that vision disorders are the number-one handicapping condition of children, in fact, as many as 1 in 4 school-aged children have vision problems, according to the College of Optometrists and Vision Development. And whereas all children deserve the opportunity to learn and to achieve their full potential, and whereas for the above reasons, public awareness about learning-related vision problems is necessary to ensure that young people receive the prompt vision treatment they need to embrace their lives. And therefore, be it resolved that I, Daniel Bakievich, Mayor of the City of Oak Creek, in accord with the Office of the Governor of the State of Wisconsin, and in recognition of the importance of good vision to learning, do hereby proclaim August 2019 Children's Vision and Learning Month, and I encourage parents, educators, school nurses, and all concerned adults to recognize the critical role good vision plays in the learning process and to work together to help prevent or reduce the impact untreated vision problems can have on our children's ability to read and learn, dated this 5th day of August 2019.
Thank you, Catherine. Any comments, questions on the proclamation? Again, Catherine pretty much spelled it out, very worthwhile cause. And with that, a motion, please. Oh, it's Mayoral, sorry. Looking for the next one. Okay, we will move on to item 5, Council Proclamation expressing support of the city to promote participation in the 2020 Census. Catherine?
Council Proclamation 1910-2020 Census Partner Proclamation. Whereas an accurate census count is vital to our community and residents' well-being by helping planners determine where to locate schools, daycare centers, roads, and public transportation, hospitals, and other facilities, and achieving an accurate and complete count of the nation's growing and changing population. And whereas more than $675 billion per year in federal and state funding is allocated to states and communities based in part on census data. And whereas census data helps determine how many seats each state will have in the U.S. House of Representatives, and often is used for the redistricting of state legislators, county and city councils, and voting districts. And whereas the 2020 Census creates jobs that stimulate economic growth and increase employment. And whereas the information collected by the Census is confidential and protected by law. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Oak Creek, Wisconsin, is committed to partnering with the U.S. Census Bureau to help ensure a full and accurate count in 2020. As a 2020 Census Partner, the City of Oak Creek will support the goals and ideals for the 2020 Census and disseminate 2020 Census information to encourage those in our community to participate. Encourage people in our community to place an emphasis on the 2020 Census and participate in events and initiatives that will raise overall awareness and ensure a full and accurate count. Support Census Tankers as they help our community complete an accurate count. Create or seek opportunities to collaborate with other like-minded groups in our community by participating in complete count committees and/or utilizing high-profile trusted voices to advocate on behalf of the 2020 Census. Cast and adopted this 5th day of August 2019.
Thank you, Catherine. Any comments, questions? I just want to say a few things. The Census did come up, the 2020 Census Committee did come up from Chicago a week ago or so, two weeks ago, met with our staff. Our staff was fully prepared, ready for this. They had their plan laid out as to what they were going to do, the steps they were going to take. Our achievement numbers typically have been in the high 80s, looking for a little bit more improvement, if possible. I mean, we're definitely showing very well, but we want to do better. This will affect us for the next 10, 15 years. So if you're out there and Census comes, please fill it out, and it only takes a minute. It is very easy to do, and we definitely need that information going forward. With that, motion.
I'll move to approve Council Proclamation 19-10 expressing support of the efforts by the city to promote participation in 2020 Census.
Kurkowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Public hearing. First one is consideration of a rezon by Mary Ellen Junkas to rezone the property at 3003 East Elm Road from RS3 Single Family Residential to P1 Park District. Read that in, please.
Certainly. Public hearing number one is to consider a request by Mary Ellen Junkas to review the property at 3003 East Elm Road from RS3 Single Family Residential to P1 CCU Park District. Applicant is Mary Ellen Junkas. Property owner, Mary Ellen Junkas. Legal description there follows. Date of notice is July 10, 2019.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Doug Seymour. I'm the Director of Community Development for the Stevo Creek. This is a public hearing, a request to rezon portion of the property at 3003 East Elm Road from RS3, which is Single Family Residential, to P1, which is a park district with a conforming conditional use for the private golf course. The location map that's before you this evening on the screen kind of shows the area. The property is the larger area in red. The area that is being rezoned, and it'll make more sense as you review it in the context of the land division that's taking place as part of the next item, but that is zone RS3, and that actually is part of the golf course operationally. And for a variety of reasons, the owners want to kind of clean that up, and as such, are going to be combining that through a minor land division with the property of the south, as well as changing that, so the entire golf course property would now be zoned at P1 Park, essentially, which is the correct category for private golf course with that can conform and conditional use. This is really kind of cleaning up the property, the zoning. It's really not impacting anything beyond that, and there are no other changes that are being proposed to the property or properties at this point in time. Plan Commission has reviewed the proposal at the meeting of July 9th, and they have recommended their approval of proposed rezoning. I'd remind everyone that this is a public hearing. If you have any questions or comments regarding the proposed rezoning, please fill out an appearance form. Once your name is called, proceed to the podium and address your questions and/or comments to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. And as Doug said, this is a public hearing. This will be the first call. Second call. Third and final call. Anybody wishing to speak, please approach podium, state your name and address. We'll now close the public hearing and move on to item 7, which is consideration of the ordinance for that rezon. At this time, we'll open it up to questions from the council. Anything, Mike?
I had a chance to talk with Mrs. Junkas before the meeting, and it seems like this is relatively routine, so I don't really have any questions.
So it went right through planning, too. There was really very limited discussion. It just makes sense. I think Doug said it best. They're just cleaning up some odds and ends here. All right, motion, please.
I want to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2944 approving a rezon of a portion of the property at 3003 East Elm Road from RS3 Single Family Residential to P1 Park, CCU Park District.
Kurkowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
And item made is consideration of a resolution approving a minor land division certification survey map submitted by Mary Ellen Junkas for the properties at 3003 and 3025 East Elm.
Thank you. As I mentioned in the public hearing narrative, this minor land division, although it's done by a certified survey map, it's a minor land division because we're not actually creating any new lots. So the vehicle for doing that is still a CSM, but it's just kind of changing the lot line from one to the other. Both lots would conform to their new zoning districts. The Commission also has reviewed this and has recommended their approval with the standard condition about technical corrections, spelling errors, things of that nature.
Any other questions, comments, Mike, anything on that one? Not motion.
I want to make a motion to adopt resolution number 12084 approving a minor land division CSM map submitted by Mary Ellen Junkas for the properties at 3003 and 3025 East Elm Road.
Kurkowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Item 9 is informational, and it's our treasurer's report, and we have Barb with us to talk about the month of June.
Thank you, Mayor. Yep, this is the treasurer's report on investment and banking for the month ending June 30th. Our beginning balance was $43,616,206.60. Ending balance, $43,314,288.48. Interest earned, $81,129.15. Beginning to ending balance was a decrease of $301,918.12. Just some of the bigger June activity, our tax collection was $925,978.2. April and May tax collection settlement was paid out to the other taxing jurisdictions of about $3.5 million, and we received the TID number 16 bond proceeds of $2,850,000.
Okay, thank you, Barb. Item 10, consideration to approve a letter of understanding between the City of Oak Creek and the Franklin, the Oak Creek-Franklin Joint School District for use of the council chambers with live streaming by the Board of Education for their meetings. So Andrew, you want to give us some background?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, thanks. I know the council hasn't been apprised of this coming down the pike here, and I just wanted to point to a couple of things in the staff report. Again, the district approached the city in, you know, maybe May of this year or so, looking at its, you know, options for live stream capability of their Board of Education meetings. They looked at a few options technologically to outfit their existing boardroom on 10th Street here, and that really proved to be kind of cost prohibitive, or maybe not the wisest investment considering the facilities there. They were looking at as much as $48,000 to kind of get the capability that they desired. So they asked the city if we'd be interested in exploring a partnership with the school, with them, to utilize our council chambers here for their twice-monthly Board of Education meetings. For many reasons, as stated in the report, we were open to that. We looked at kind of the arithmetic of covering our costs. We chose a per-meeting fee to the school district of about $50 an hour. That actually is, of course, the part-time staff's pay, so the very fixed costs that we know and we could identify, but we also added a buffer of approximately $20 per meetings for any technological, technology depreciation, the instance where we may have to have somebody maybe making a higher wage come in with vacations or time off and those types of things, and kind of just had a buffer there for any unknown costs or costs that we couldn't readily identify, so to speak. School district was okay with that. I think they are planning on meeting as a school board to ratify this after you, if you so choose to do that this evening. And just generally, I think it's a great idea for probably a little overdue, not to throw those folks under the bus, but a little overdue, this is something that should have been implemented already, in my opinion, and it's only my opinion, with the school district, just for that real transparency element of government. We're in a time where, well, as you see in the room this evening, time is precious to people, and where you can make it easier and more convenient for folks to participate in government, you know, that's always a good thing. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any specific questions. I'd also add one last piece, and that is, as you see in the LOU, we intend to encompass this relationship as well in our, kind of our master MOU that we have. I know you're familiar with that. So if there's anything maybe we hadn't addressed in this LOU, we could certainly include that as we wrap up that other larger MOU. This is just an interim step here to get them the streamlined, or excuse me, the video stream capability for beginning in their September meetings.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. Steve, you want to go first?
Andrew, you said $50 an hour, but the letter says $50 a meeting.
Right, it was 50 a meeting. I apologize.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Alderman Dukniak, 3rd district. As I first saw this, nothing but positive. It's a great use of community resources and being responsible to the taxpayers, not having the district having to shell out another $48,000 after several hundred million in referendum money. So, great. And I look at some of the specifics, and the $50 per meeting, does that even cover our costs?
It does.
Typically, a school board meeting, if they led you to believe an hour, they're misleading you.
We haven't...
Okay.
I can hold if you want to.
Okay. So that was one. And then asking the president of the district earlier this evening, how often do you meet? Currently, they meet weekly. I think it's typical of them, though, to meet bi-weekly or twice monthly. So where is the actual schedule that was presented with this letter to you?
I saw that it was called out as an attachment, and I didn't print it off, but they're looking at twice monthly. So I think they have also a committee of the whole concept or some such. They're not planning on streaming those committee of the whole meetings, or whatever they call those, board work sessions, they're sometimes called, but they're looking at twice, two meetings per month.
Okay, so Andrew, should there then be some, an addendum to that memorandum of understanding, kind of, you know, addressing what happens if they do need to meet weekly, such as what they've been doing recently with all the referendum work and the presentation to the community with all of the work, the rework being done at the schools, and that's really not specifically laid out or addressed here? I mean, will there be a, I guess, an agreement for us to review, or are we asking too much on that?
Well, a couple of things there, Alderman. First, the schedule that accompanied the letter of understanding called basically two meetings a month, it would actually be, on average, a little less of that because there's certain months, like the council here, where we only have one meeting, or whatever the case may be. So that's number one. They did call out the exact dates, and we do get to approve that calendar annually. I think it was February of each year, the officials from each party get together and review and approve the calendar. We could certainly make that a council approval if you'd like to, so we can see that.
I don't think that's necessary. That there is a schedule then to review. I know some concerns were brought up about a potential conflict with, you know, tomorrow's an example, National Night Out, where we have to move council meeting, election dates, several of them during the course of the year, and just not having that information on here, we were kind of wondering, okay, what's going to happen with days when we, the city, have to occupy this room?
So we did a couple of things to address that. First, we compared our calendars for what was known, and there isn't any conflict, save for Board of Review, that we don't know the dates yet. There is no conflict through July of next year. We compared both calendars. Second, we do get a chance to review and approve annually. Third, one thing that was not in this letter, and it was kind of an idea the city had later on, was, I believe it's in the last clause, we, this is, the city has the priority usage of these chambers. So if we know, if we have a special meeting or an emergency meeting, you know, that will have to be addressed, but even if we have a routine, we have to reschedule a budget workshop that we couldn't have, or whatever may come up, if there is 72 hours' notice, essentially, the city has bumping rights, and the school district must make arrangements of its own. So we always keep that priority usage with the city council.
Okay.
If I could address your other question in regards to the, how we arrived at the $50 per meeting, we, our known cost with staff time, payroll taxes, et cetera, is a little over $30 per meeting, for a two-hour minimum. So we have that approximately $18 to $20 buffer on top of that to address, you know, technological issues that may come up, or just depreciation of the technology, you know, or whatever. So there's that buffer there. And again, if we see we need to adjust this, we can certainly do that at any time in that larger MOU. So I think we have the ability. And this is a relationship thing, right? So if it's not working for one party or the other, we're going to have to talk and make sure that it works for both parties.
And they take our typical setup? Nothing different needs to be set?
Correct. That is my understanding.
And then in instances where there are, or there is a large turnout for a meeting, and the room behind needs to be used, and it needs to be set, do we just bear that cost and the $50 fee?
I hadn't thought of that one, but certainly we can address that. If there's a frequency there, certainly if it's a one-off deal.
And I guess just with what the school district had on their agenda in the last 18 months, some of those meetings were very, very well attended, and probably would extend beyond what the capacity of this room is. And again, I don't know what the future holds, but something to consider. Other than that, I think it's great.
Anyone else?
I just have a question. What are they going to do? It says in line 2 here that they, with the video on outlets as school district sees fit, so will they be broadcasting their meetings like we do at every meeting, or not necessarily? Because it says as he's fit, so to me, it's like, are they going to broadcast it, maybe not?
The, I guess that's up to them, but the full intention of this maneuver, this relationship, is to streamline, stream, that too, hopefully, stream the video similar, exactly similar to what the council does. So they will have their own YouTube channel. We, on the other hand, we will not provide editing services, as it states in that article 2, or number 2. We just deliver them a raw video, because we obviously didn't include any time associated with editing or anything like that. So whatever they do with that raw video, when we give that to them, I guess we don't care.
Do you know what they're going to do at their current board area or boardroom?
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure. And traffic, I guess I just had a concern about traffic. I think, too, again, as Rich alluded to, there can be meetings where you're going to have a larger turnout, so it's going to make Monday nights potentially a pretty, potentially a busy night here at the City Hall. Oh, yeah.
Anyone else, comments, questions? Okay, we'll move for a motion.
Okay, where are we here? Number 10. Dukniak moved to approve a letter of understanding by and between the City of Oak Creek and the Oak Creek-Franklin Joint School District for their use of the council chambers for live streaming Board of Education meetings.
Kurkowski.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kurkowski.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Item 11 concerns engineering and its consideration of a resolution approving a stormwater management practice maintenance agreement with Rightway Bus Company for their expansion project at 6970 South Sixth Street. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. So Rightway, Go Rightway is expanding into the building at 6970 Sixth Street. They are going to expand their parking area, thus increasing their impervious area, and then with a need to expand their pond. So this is his opportunity to require them to enter into the stormwater management maintenance agreement, which cements the responsibility on their end for maintaining these stormwater features.
Okay, any questions? Okay, motion.
Kurkowski will make a motion that the common council adopt resolution number 12087-080519, a resolution approving a stormwater management practices maintenance agreement with Rightway Bus LLC for their expansion project located at 6970 South Sixth Street. Dukniak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Item 12, consideration of a resolution making certain findings and approving amendment number 1 of the project plan for tax increment District Number 12 of the City of Oak Creek in the state of Wisconsin. Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor. I can address this one as well, and Doug, I'd ask you to chime in whenever you feel necessary. What's before you is the third of four stops in the public approval process for an amendment to an existing TID or the creation of a new TID. Here, as the council is well aware, we are amending the TID 12 boundary to include certain parcels that were not included in the original, I guess I'll call it the IKEA TID, TID 12, along Drexel. And as council is aware, we are amending that boundary to include certain developable parcels to the east of the interstate, typically known as the Highgate or the Wingspan Development Again, this is step 3 of 4 in the process. The Joint Review Board has met, the Plan Commission has held a public hearing, so of course they met, and they are recommending your approval this evening. And then it will ultimately go back to the Joint Review Board, and I believe that meeting is slated for the middle part of next week. I can't remember the exact date. And that will be the final, the 16th, sounds right. That'll be the final public approval if it advances past the council this evening. In keeping with what we did in TID work of past, the last year or two, we gave very comprehensive presentations at both the Joint Review Board and at the public hearing for the Plan Commission. We weren't intending on giving the full presentation, the slides of that presentation from our consultant Van de Wall are in the council packet for you, as of course, the TID 12 project plan. So we won't give you that, but we can go into as much detail as the council deems necessary this evening. I will also note that there were no attendees, or should I say, there was no public comment at the public hearing for the Plan Commission at all. The big thrust of the goals here, and obviously this is very strategic and very important for the City of Oak Creek moving forward with this incredibly important gateway into the community. We know that the condition that 13th Street and Drexel Avenue specifically will be left will not be an ultimate solution from an infrastructure capacity standpoint for the development goals that we have on the east side of the freeway, again, the Highgate and Wingspan tracks. Also, we are putting in place a budget to incentivize development and/or to handle certain project costs that arise for either tract, either the eastern segment of the TID as being amended, or the western piece south of IKEA. We know we have very big goals for the City of Oak Creek on both of these pieces of developable property, and we have created budgets to address those challenges as they arise and really incentivize very attractive development. Overall, the project costs for the TID 12 as amended before you increased approximately about $8.4 million. But of course, the original IKEA TID, handling, you know, just that TID, that IKEA parcel, and then some acreage to the south of that, only had the increment for the IKEA. Here, we've increased the project cost about $8.4 million. However, there is, you know, abundant opportunity for increment on the eastern track, the Highgate and Wingspan parcels. So with that, the project feasibility, the financial feasibility as required by statutes for these types of TID actions that you are considering this evening, looks very, you know, good. It looks very healthy. So with that, the project feasibility, the financial feasibility as required by statutes for these types of TID actions that you are considering this evening looks very, you know, good. It looks very healthy. Again, the last step in this process after we discuss if it advances is to go to the joint review board. The timing of this is really important as well for the city. If you amend or create a TID prior to September 30 of each, of any year, the base value reverts back to the previous January 1. If you take that action after September 30 of any year, you, the, the DOR, the Department of Revenue certifies the values eventually, but they use January, in this case, January 1 of 2020. This was more important when we expected some immediate increment on the Highgate parcels. It looks like that's a little bit delayed. But that's why we're, we brought forward the TID amendment to you now to get ahead of that September 30 deadline. So as is the case with all of this, and really is a perfect example of what I just shared with you, these TID project plans are never an exact blueprint for how things are going to work. These are, these are long planning and implementation horizons. Things inevitably do change in these. So this is not a blueprint, but this is a qualified budget for what we think we will expect, and it allows us the opportunity to move things around in these buckets of project costs as we implement the new TID 12 if amended. I think that's all I have. I don't know if you had anything else to add, Doug, or?
Yeah, I mean, obviously there's a, there's a lot that has been and could be said to kind of summarize the events that have taken place today regarding the, the expansion of this district. I mean, just other than teriterate, the things that you already know, I mean, the city and its review and its consideration of TIF districts or expansions thereof is, is very, very conservative in terms of, of the finances. And I think our track record suggests and proves that, and we, we do things a little bit differently, and I think it's all been to the benefit of the city and to the finance of the city as, as evidenced by our bond rating and some of the most recent bond issuance issuances that we've brought before you. Our TIF capacity is there, it's strong. Our overall TIF strategy is such that, I mean, we don't have, you know, this would be our, this is our 16th district. Eight of them are closed. So, I mean, I think that it's a demonstration that, I mean, the city just doesn't open TIF districts. We, we close them, we bring those back on the tax rolls for the benefit of all the taxing jurisdictions, county, MATC, school district, as well as the locality. And it's a very effective, in some cases, the only means of, that a local municipality has to really get the type of economic development that its citizens demand.
Just adding into that, a question that came up or a comment that came up at Plan Commission, which I think is a really good one, and I wanted to share. As I mentioned, the project cost, overall project plan, if you will, TID costs went up 8.4 million, well, over 4.9 million of that is the 13th Street and Drexel improvements that we know we will need to kind of put that in a position where the capacity is there for many, many decades. What, what we do not want to do is put the residents and the traveling public through very, especially on the heels of this last 18 months or so, put them through iterations of capacity building in 13th and/or Drexel as projects come online. Once we hit a critical mass, we want to go in and do a project that allows it to, allows us, the city and our development partners, to have the capacity there as opposed to a construction project when that parcel comes online, and then another capacity building project in a, in a couple of years after that, we want to kind of set it and forget it. So that's really the impetus. Handling the 13th Street and Drexel Avenue costs is really the impetus for amending the boundary to the east side of the freeway, and luckily we have some projects that are coming online and some that we don't know yet, but they will come online and create increment to handle that. What I, what I was speaking to earlier, the comment at Plan Commission, well, why doesn't the county improve 13th Street and Drexel, 13th as a county facility? Well, they did. So I'm sure they think that they don't need to do it for a while, they're just open to two-lane traffic there, they did build some capacity into that roadway. And Doug brought up a good point. Well, they are kind of participating in that because they're a member of the joint review board that gets to approve the TID, and the county is foregoing its taxes. This is the TID mechanism. The county is foregoing its taxes for a period of some years. And in, in kind of, in, in a, in a different way, they, they are paying their fair share of improvements to the county facility, although we may be the agent performing those improvements. So I thought, I thought that was a good, good response to that question there. They are foregoing tax revenue that we are using to build 13th Street when the time is needed to do that.
Questions for Andrew? Go ahead, Steve.
Alderman Kerkowski, first district. Andrew, I hope this doesn't come across as too silly of a question because I don't recall this coming up in the past with regards to TIDS. It may have. But it looks like the amendment is going to encompass some residential prop, occupied residences, so to speak, the lone house on Drexel and 13th and Drexel. So I know how the taxes relate to, to districts. How does personal property taxes are affected by having a occupied dwelling within a TID district? That's my only question, by the way.
It's, that's an interesting one as, as recent changes to the law on personal property taxes may convolute the response. So if I misspeak, I, I will, I will correct myself when I, when I find the exact answer. But as is the case for many previous years, personal property taxes were paid into the district and the district did retain that. I don't know if these individual, there's actually only two residential properties, actually there's probably three because we probably have the one on Drexel, the home south of IKEA. If they have personal property that they pay taxes on, that would be retained by the district, and that flows with, you know, either you pay it or you don't have to pay it, or you don't, it doesn't go to the district if you don't have any to pay. Does that make sense?
So there's, whatever property taxes they pay today.
Real and personal.
Real, yep.
Become, become part of the base.
Becomes part of, it doesn't come to the city, it becomes part of the TID district.
That, those are, those would be the amended base, so those would be retained by all of the taxing jurisdictions just as they were previous to this, any action on the TID.
Just like before then.
Right.
Thanks.
Rich? Alderman Dukenyak, third district. Andrew, I, we discussed this once before, but I've forgotten what the explanation was. The small parcel south of Drexel Avenue on TID 12, what, what is that going to be used for?
So that parcel is included in the amended boundary due to the fact that very, it's very likely that if the city ultimately builds out to the previously approved TIA, the capacity needed there would require an additional turn lane.
Ah, okay.
And, you know, I think by all counts, engineering-wise, we feel that, you know, a, a taking of the entire property is probably preferable, again, working with, with the property owner, not in any sort of a, you know, hostile or contentious manner. But it's, we, we feel that that property owner is probably going to welcome being kind of bought out and moved along as opposed to having.
A busy area.
A very close, probably in the front porch the way we drew it out. So that's why that parcel's included.
Okay. And then just a comment, reading through the material somewhere, it was presented as Drexel Avenue being the new gateway to Oak Creek. So with council action on TID 12, I'm certainly in favor of it. It's not like we get one chance and one chance only at this, but really, if we're going to do it, we should do it right the first time, and certainly adding the additional portion to TID 12, I think is, is the right way to go. Again, comment on that.
Anything else, Ken?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to thank Andrew and his team, and obviously our outside counsel. And Van de Wall, very thorough and thoughtful and strategic process, I think, involved in this planning and the, in the expansion of TID 12. Obviously, as Rich, you just mentioned, the strategic, obviously, entry into the city, obviously, you know, the Drexel interchange kind of kicked that all off, and that's going back, I don't know, five, 10 years ago. But, you know, it gives us a chance to really be strategic and invest wisely here on behalf of the city, and, and is really is, is a catalyst here. We've got some stuff in the hopper, as Andrew's already mentioned, but it gives us an opportunity to plan very strategically and invest in this particular area of the city for, for decades to come. So I, standing joint board review met a couple of weeks ago to review this. There was no, no concerns. I chaired that committee. There was no concerns, full support from the five taxing jurisdictions on that, on that board review, and I, I think it's a great plan and a great, a great method to move forward on this.
All right. Seeing no other questions, motion on 12.
Kerkowski make a motion that the council adopt resolution number 12086-080519, a resolution by the common council making certain findings and approving amendment number one to the project plan for tax incremental district number 12, city of Oak Creek, Wisconsin.
Dukenyak second. Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye. Item 13 is consideration of a resolution approving a minor land division in a certified survey map submitted by Simon Kreis on for the properties at 9834, 9878, and 9880 South Nicholson Road. Got it, Doug?
Sure, thanks. Recall, one of our initial items this, this evening was a minor land division for the properties on Elm Road. Very similar instance here, this property owner is readjusting the property line between two of his properties to make them, essentially make them both 100 feet. They both meet the zoning. The vehicle for doing that is a certified survey map. That certified survey map has been reviewed by the plan commission, and they have recommended their approval. Again, subject to technical corrections, no new lots are being created, it's just a adjusting a lot line to create two equal-sized lots in, in terms of the furniture.
Questions?
Ken, I had just one question for Doug.
Ken?
Doug, can you remind us, what is the, is there a long-term land use plan for parcel two? Do you know off the top of your head?
I, I believe, and I, I'm not 100% sure, but I think that it's actually shown in a single-family residential, but there's a considerable amount of environmental properties on there, such as floodplain, potentially wetlands. So, I mean, well, it's, it's possible that there could be some additional development in terms of access internal to that. They would have to really work very closely with the, the layout to ensure that the environmentally sensitive areas are not impacted.
Go ahead, Ken. Any other questions? Not? Motion on 13?
Dukenyak move to approve resolution number 12085-080519, approving a minor land division certified survey map submitted by Simon Kreis on for the properties at 93, excuse me, 9834 and 9870-80 South Nicholson Road.
Kerkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye. Item 14 is consideration of a motion to concur with the recommendation of the Traffic and Safety Commission and approve the following E through E, different improvements from stop signs, railroad crossings on districts 1, 3, 4, and the railroad crossings throughout the city. Mike, you want to break it down, or Rich, real quickly?
Um, Mike, I, I can. I, I know that Alderman Dukenyak, third district, I am a member of the Traffic and Safety Committee, and as my colleague Kerkowski will say, I hope that you've had the opportunity to review the council report, and really a lot of the explanation is in that report. There was significant discussion about these traffic measures at our last meeting. So, you know, really the explanation and, and what led our committee to recommend these moves was described in both the council report and was discussed at the last meeting. However, if you have any questions in regard to our five-point proposals, I'm sure either Mike or I would take a stab at answering those questions.
I guess I just have one. You're going to do no parking on the whole north side of East Lake Vista from the western entrance to the parking lot, the fifth?
Mike, I'll let you take that one.
Um, I was hoping that you were going to take that one. It's my understanding that this was a request of the PD, but I don't have the details on that. I was hoping to talk with Matt before the end of the day, and that didn't, didn't happen.
Okay, and, and I don't have the details either. I know what was brought up at the meeting is that, or the discussions were that there needed to be one side of the roadway with no parking anytime, just because that was implemented temporarily for the fireworks and the fourth, but that probably was a prudent long-term strategy for that area. But I certainly can get the information from our committee chair as to why it was designated for the north side.
I was curious, I, I don't want to make it any harder for anybody to visit that park. So I mean, we do have lots down there, but I was down there last week, it's a very popular park. I'm just curious why, why that was going on, that we can't fix it in the future.
I see the report does mention that 4th of July parking, they would not enforce that, they would bag those signs, so that would not be the case. So obviously that's probably the highest attended event.
Yeah, we do have events, you know, Savalia had his events, and the park was used pretty much at capacity there, obviously, the 4th of July. We have, we have the Beer Garden coming up here this weekend, and I would imagine that road will be utilized again for parking, so.
And then Mayor Dan, and Chief Rosen, you may be able to help us with this. Need to wake him up over there. Sorry, Chief. Um, was that, oh, okay, was that, was that area necessary for fire and emergency equipment to get through?
In the initial discussions on the whole fireworks subject, we had 17 points for the fire department presented to celebrations. In regards to parking, the only thing that we needed was a place to put our equipment. That was all the police department. I was staying in my lane.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Mayor, would you want to suggest maybe holding that item and just giving some more information on it?
I'd like a little more explanation on E.
Sure.
Going on with the future of the park, I don't, I don't see posting it, just the unposted.
Yeah, then if they're intending to cover, I know I was down there, of course, people definitely parked there on the 4th of July.
And it was needed. It was needed. I don't, again, we got some bugs to work out at the 4th of July on.
But I mean, other than added capacity seems to be able, lots that exist currently, other than, other than special events. Who knows what the thought process was?
Yeah.
Why?
Just curious.
I, I will make you aware that we have postponed our September meeting, so.
It can wait.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, nothing pressing.
Okay. We're going to, we're going to hold on to.
On E.
Alderman Dukenyak, I have a quick comment.
Sure.
On Alderman Kerkowski, first district. With regards to item B, I would concur with the residents' comments in the report that said East Drexel Avenue is a problem with speeding vehicles using the shoulder as a passing lane and pedestrian cyclist safety. So I, I support putting up the signs. I think it'll help with issues where people are parking there, although I don't think it's going to help with speeding and the passing lane being used, but that's a whole nother issue, but I do support the signs being put up.
Right, thank you. I mean, just.
It is what it is.
Right, we do what we can.
Yep, I understand.
I mean, there are a lot of neighborhoods where the average speed is significantly overposted. We take measures that supposedly will help and guarantee that they will.
Okay. Motion then on 14.
All right. Dukenyak move to approve the recommendations of the Traffic and Safety Commission with the exception of item E. So that would be items A through D for approval, holding on item E until the October meeting. That's the first council meeting in October.
Kerkowski will second that.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Item 15 is license committee. I'd like to turn that over to Alderman Kerkowski.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I trust everybody has had an opportunity to review the common council report.
Thank you, Mayor, I, I trust everybody has had an opportunity to review the common council report, we've heard that before tonight. Does anybody have any questions or concerns with what's on the report? Great, seeing none. Then Kerkowski will make a motion to grant the various license requests as listed on the August 5, 2019 License Committee Report.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kerkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
And item 16 is our vendor summary report for July, please take a look, and any questions, we can direct them either to the front table or the city administrator. And whenever you're satisfied, motion.
Gail, move to approve the July 30, 2019 vendor summary report in the combined total amount of $765,848.45.
Kerkowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
And item 17 is consideration of a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin state statutes to discuss the following, section 19.85, parent one, parent E, to discuss development at the property located at 9300 South 5th Avenue and 4001 East Lake Vista Boulevard and 4200 East Lake Vista Boulevard. B, section 19.85, parent one, parent E, and G, and parent G, to consider the claim of Anasio Medical Payments Solutions, Inc., and C, section 19.85, parent one, parent G, to discuss potential litigation related to the opioid crisis. Council President, Gail.
Thank you, Mayor. Gail, move to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin state statutes to discuss the following, A, section 19.85, sub one, sub E, to discuss development at the property located at 9300 South 5th Avenue, 4001 East Lake Vista Boulevard, and 4200 East Lake Vista Boulevard. B, section 19.85, sub one, sub E, and G, to consider the claim of Anasio Medical Payments Solutions, Inc., and C, section 19.85, sub one, sub G, to discuss potential litigation related to the opiate crisis.
Kerkowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman, Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
We'll now convene into closed session and reconvene at its conclusion.
Listen.
Session.
Kerkowski, will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
We'll now consider any actions.
Thank you, Mayor. Gail, will move to approve a settlement agreement and mutual release with Anasio Medical Payments Solutions, Inc., doing business as Advanced Medical Pricing Solutions.
Kerkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Gail will also then move to hire the law firm of Phipps Deacon Purnell, P L L C, to investigate and prosecute a lawsuit for claims arising out of the marketing and distribution of opiates in and to the city of Oak Creek.
Kerkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kerkowski.
No.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Okay, brings us to adjournment.
Kerkowski.
Go ahead, you got something to say, Steve?
No, I was going to make a motion for adjournment.
Just before we do, I just want to make a couple announcements for those people that are still streaming us. We're having our meeting on Monday, and there is a reason for that, tomorrow is National Night Out, will be held at the American Legion grounds, all protective services will be out there, a lot of work and effort, this is one of our bigger community events, please get out there and learn what you can do to help protect and make our community better. There is going to be a drone show, that's something new for us down there, so everybody's looking forward to that. Also, the confluence is still going on down at the lake, it will continue, so go down there, you can take in some art, and by a happy coincidence, our beer garden starts down there on Thursday through Sunday, so if you get a chance, please take that in and go explore Lake Vista. And then just personally, we had an event called the Cafe, it was in, in a farmer's market this weekend, we had eight different ethnic groups there showing their culture, their food, their art, their entertainment, it was an exceptional event, really unique. But I'd personally like to thank, there was a team of five ladies that got together and really helped pull this off, Catherine Roski, our clerk, Leslie Flynn, our communication director, Don Carrillo, our farmer, farmer's market manager, Carolyn Bukiewicz, our celebrations chair, and Kristen Craig, our tourism director. These five ladies helped put this together basically five weeks, it was five people in about five weeks, and they did just an excellent job, and I think the community's really going to be happy with the results of what they did going forward, this always in the first week of August if it continues, so, thank you, ladies. With that, entertain a motion for adjournment.
Kerkowski will make a motion to adjourn.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.